Thank you everybody for coming out. This evening's event is hosted by Dare to Dream. So Dare to Dream was created to enhance the lives of entrepreneurs and those whom they serve. Our nonprofit is designed to help those aspiring entrepreneurs regardless of background, who dare to dream to gain affordable access to legal consultants, account resources, technical know-how, funding, scholarships, and other business creation resources. The Dare to Dream Foundation is a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and as such only provide opportunities for discussion. And we do not endorse any candidates or political party. For more information, you can find it at www.makellegacy.org. Again, that is makellegacy.org. I'm tonight's moderator. My name is Jake Oakes. I am founder and director of Liberty United, a coalition that's nonpartisan promoting unity behind constitutional values. We look forward to hearing first from council candidates. We have some questions from constituents that have been previously submitted. We'll go around and give them all the opportunity to respond to the same question. You're going to be limited to two minutes, or sorry, 90 seconds. I will flag you. Let me just grab this real quick. I will be flagging you. So hands up when we reach that 30 seconds left mark. Let me go ahead and set that on here. If there's a need for additional follow-up to a question, we will provide that opportunity. If I feel like there needs to be more depth, there may be some opportunity this evening to allow that. And if we do give someone the chance to provide additional insight, we'll give that same amount of time to the rest of you. We'll go ahead and get started with our first question. We'll be starting here on this end. So our first question that was submitted is going to be, in council, who do you represent and work for? Who do you work for?
As a council member, you obviously, I would obviously work for the people that elected me. Those are my constituents, the people of Spanish Fork, citizens of Spanish Fork. Just since that was the first question, I probably should introduce myself. My name is Kevin Euler.
Thank you. Yes, please state your name when you come up.
So my name's Stephen Carlson. And just like Kevin said, you know, we work for the citizens of this city, the taxpayers. They're the ones that pay the bills around here. So as a city councilman, you need to know that first and foremost. You know, anything you've done in the city, you know that that's who you work for. And you see your friends and neighbors side by side, and I think that that's important. And I think at the end of the day, it's also important to know whose dollars you're spending, right? That's not my money coming out of my account, that's money coming out of your account. So I think that's super important to know. And yeah, thank you.
My name's John Terrell. And I agree, I think if you're, we're going to be representing the city, then that's who we should be working for. On the other hand, I get the opportunity a lot of times to see each and every one of you on a regular basis, because I work for Macy's currently. And I've done that just for a short time, just to keep me, myself going. I'm semi-retired, and I love the people of Spanish Fork. I grew up here, and this has been a great opportunity for me.
My name is Brett Bills. I currently work for Domo, we're a data analytics organization. We make sense out of people's information. So that's what I work for today. I'm up here as a candidate to work for the citizens of Spanish Fork. I've been involved in, in a lot of initiatives throughout town. I generally get dragged into these initiatives by citizens who have questions and concerns and don't dare ask them. And so I have to agree, obviously, if you are voted to the city council, you're beholden to the citizens of Spanish Fork. My goal in that job, the reason I'm seeking this job frankly, is so that I can help the citizens understand what it is that is being done. The city has a huge staff. They have a lot of initiatives and a lot of goals. And a lot of us have day jobs, and we can't keep up with what's actually going on. We hear rumors, a lot of people get upset. And one of my hobbies that I picked up about six years ago was digging into those and seeing if they are real or not, and what are the motives behind the people that we've elected. And I decided that I'm pretty good at that. So I'd like to be more involved and be frankly, more informed, so that I can help those around us make better decisions.
My name is Shane Marshall, longtime resident of Spanish Fork City. I think everyone up here is going to say the same thing. If we're elected at city council, we work for the citizens. We are all taxpayers, we work for the taxpayers. I spent 25 years at the Utah Department of Transportation where I worked for the taxpayers. And I knew every time that I spent a single penny, it came from me, my family, and my friends. I know the responsibility it takes to take that much money in and spend it in a responsible manner. And that's what I would do on the city council. I've wanted to run, I ran two years ago, and I run, before I decided to run, someone asked several years ago, they said, "Why would you want to be, why would you run?" And I said, "Until I can answer that question without saying, 'Because I love the city,' I'm not going to run." So I'm going to run, I love the city, but I'm running so that I can make a difference. So I can make a difference in my kids' lives, I make a difference in my family's lives, make a difference in the citizens of the Spanish Fork. So thank you very much.
I'm Jesse Carden, here tonight, as running for city council. I want to thank everyone that's here tonight. It's hot, so thank you for coming out and being here. Thanks to those holding the event, those broadcasting the event, so those that aren't here can also see us. I run the Plasma Center down on Main Street, and that's what I do for a living. But as has been mentioned many times up here, when we run for city council, you then become, you work for the citizens of this great city that are here now, those that will be here in the future. And we want to make a place where those that will be here decades down the road will still be able to call. It's important, like is mentioned before, that we remember that in every decision that we make and everything that we do, that the citizens of Spanish Fork have elected us and hold us to that standard that we need to make the city continue to be great and look forward to their best interest in every decision that we do.
So again, my name is Landon Took, and I love Spanish Fork. I'm lucky to be here tonight. And these candidates, you know, kudos to them for, you know, being brave enough to run with me. And again, thank you for hosting this event this evening. I, you know, of course, work for Spanish Fork if elected as a city official, and look forward to working with you, listening to you, and helping make the important decisions that change our city in such an important time as we grow. And I'm excited to be a part of that. I want a voice at that table and to be a great representative for you all. Thank you.
I'm Mike Clayson, excited to be here and like to thank Dare to Dream for this. And of course, as always, anywhere you're going with Spanish Fork, Channel 17 will be there for you. So all those that are sitting at home in the nice air conditioning, I hope you're enjoying this. I'm excited to be here. I guess who I work for, during the day I have a couple bosses, at night I have one. And so I figure, why not work for 40,000 more? So if elected, I'll work for this city. I love this city, been here my whole life. Some of the things that this city has pulled off, pressurized irrigation, their own TV channel, they're cutting edge. My belief is the best city in America, and nothing to make me happier than to work for.
Thank you. All right, so our next question that we're going to have will be, how do you plan to involve Spanish Fork residents in the decision-making process in our town? What would you do differently from what is being done today?
I'm going to try to hold this, maybe that'll help us out a little bit better. I'll pretend I'm at a football game and screaming into the mic and less so official. So for me, it is about making a collective decision together, and your councilman really is your voice to that. You know, one of the things I told the mayor, Layson, out there tonight, I appreciated his accessibility. I told a little story about him, introducing my son to him. I think it's super important, we should be able to call and know who's ever elected up here by name, I feel like you have access to it. Helping make decisions, one of the things I love is technology. So technology has so many ways for us to engage with each other without taking away from our daily lives. There's a very, there's a wide array of things that, there's a wide array of things that we can use, but I really think it's that personal accessibility when you know your friends and your neighbors and you want to make sure that you have somebody to call. That's happening today. I want to enhance that a little bit more, and I want to make sure that any, everybody in this town's voice is heard on any subject that they want. Open and honest transparency happens because you have somebody to talk to and you're willing to engage. So that's really what I stand for and what I want to believe in.
When I started thinking about running for city council, I decided, well, how am I going to learn about the city council unless I attend? And I think I've attended enough that I've, I think they're tired of me. But I'm not going to stop whether I'm elected or not. I think that's one opportunity that every citizen should take the opportunity to, every once in a while, just go ahead and attend. Wednesday, I went to the city planning and development meeting. At the city planning and development meeting, there was only two other people, other than the people that were sitting up on the stand. And it makes me wonder sometimes how involved we're willing to get, to get things done here in the city. I think there are some areas that we could concentrate on. I think the communication isn't the best sometimes from the city. I'd love to see him go ahead and get a webpage set up. Now, I know they have the Spanish Fork City webpage, but it'd be nice if we could have a commu, open communication webpage to where you have the opportunity to express your thoughts without having to pick up that phone and try to catch somebody or call somebody at the office. I know on my web, on my website with the campaigning, I have a spot where you can go ahead and fill out information and get it to me, and it automatically goes into my email so that I have a chance to get that. It would be great if we had that same type of situation to create a transparency for the people. The other thing is, is if we could get an agenda set up and sent out ahead of time from their meeting, so that we have an opportunity to see what they're going to discuss. And this is just a few things that I think that could be done.
Thank you. We are, we are on time.
Can you repeat the question?
How do you plan to involve Spanish Fork residents in the decision-making process in town? And what would you do differently than what's being done now?
So actually, when I saw that question, I like it, because the city has done a lot of work to get information out. They, they've got a great website, they've got a decent Facebook presence, not everyone uses Facebook, but the city is putting the information out there. One thing that I would like to see done a little bit differently, there's a lot of surveys that go around, there's a lot of surveys that are posted. And honestly, within about 10, 15 minutes of the city sharing those surveys, there are people giving feedback, saying, "Why doesn't it ask this? If it asks this, I could express myself more," maybe even a box to express their own views instead of a, "Do you want this? Do you want this? Do you want this?" So I think the technology is in place, and I think that we as a community, Spanish Fork is amazing, because we're like this cool little oasis of rural where we have embraced technology, you know, ahead of our time. The technology is there. I think that what I would do differently is invite a little bit differently. Polls, four ideas. Before we jump into an idea and start spending money to try to make something happen, I think that a pre-poll of some sort to ask people, "Would you support this and what are you willing to pay for it?" Makes a lot more sense. I think that's one of the most, most pieces of feedback that I see on these city surveys that currently happen. I would like to implement a way for people to actually vote, non-binding, and have it be citizens registered to send in votes on projects, so that we can get some pre-information. Because people aren't coming to the meetings, people are embracing watching them, but they aren't going to them. And the posts by the city, people are consuming them, but they're not interacting with them and sharing items there. I don't know if it's the public nature of it, but there's a hesitancy there.
We're coming up on time.
Oh, okay, anyway, there's a hesitancy there. I would, frankly, we need to attack that. People need to feel comfortable sharing their thoughts and ideas with the city without feeling like they are attacking a place that they love. Maybe that's all.
Appreciate that. If you'll just make sure to keep glancing over here, so I can give you a hand signal when we come up on 30 seconds.
All right, this is a great question, as far as how, how would I plan to involve Spanish Fork residents in the decision-making process in our town? And so the first thing that I would suggest is, set up a meeting with our city manager, Seth Perrins. He is a bright guy. I sat down with him and loved every minute of that hour and a half. He, he knows what he's talking about, he's bright, he's passionate about the city, and he'll inform you on what is really going on. As a council member, you know, you're, you're boots on the ground, you're boots and ear on the ground, right? To what the needs are and to what, you know, how we can improve our city. And so again, having that seat at the decision-making table comes, it's a two-way street, it's communication. And that's another thought I had for you is, is communication. And I'm, I try to be a good communicator. So as a council member, to promote this, I would, I would communicate well with you, you could message me, I would phone call, you know, whatever it is, communication-wise, social media. And I would be very happy to, you know, be that listening ear and talk with you about what's going on, so you're, so you're informed. And I would, you know, last, last thought is, is I would love to listen to, you know, how you would answer this question. That was, you know, how would you best answer this? And that would be my, my last thought is, you know, how would you, how would you remedy this?
I think it might be advantageous not to look at you, so I can talk longer, so I'm going to look this way. It's a really good question. I think right now, we do a really good job as a city as pushing information out and hoping that it gets consumed. We don't, we have a hard time, and I think just, community, why we have a hard time in entering into a dialogue. It's very easy to push something out, get a comment, and go back and forth on a very high-level topic and not really get into the details about why and what. So I think we need to figure out a way to get into the, into the conversation and have a conversation with folks. We've relied so much on social media to have a dialogue that's just not working. We need to sit down with folks, we need to talk to them, and we need to understand their position and understand our position, so we can come together and make a good decision. And not just rely on a push and say, "Hey, with the information's out there, you go find it." A dialogue needs to happen, a communication needs to happen. What I would do differently would be to be open and honest and very transparent and invite people in, and let's have the conversation.
The city has done a good job of adapting and changing to technologies, like has been mentioned before. You look at this year, as soon as the budget came into place on July 1st, there's infographics sent out through social media, through email, through, through just different avenues to make sure that that information was in the citizens' hands as soon as possible. But like I said before, there's a lot of people that may not feel heard. We have counselors, council members, we have mayor, our city staff, they answer phone calls, they listen, and they're there to, to take those, to traffic those and, and answer those questions when they're there. We need to find a way to get to those people who don't feel comfortable calling, coming to the meetings, maybe answering that survey, because maybe it was worded differently. And so some of that is going to take dialogue, having conversations, setting up meetings that are comfortable. We have quite a few people out here in 100-degree heat, I brought that up before, but it's hot out here, and people are here because they want to know what the leadership of our community looks like. And we need to continue to have events like this and others that are going to get people together, talking, discussing, and coming up with solutions. Because those best solutions come when we talk and dialogue together, they don't come when a couple of people sit in a room and think that they know best. It happens when we work together as a community to make it better.
I really do like this question. When, when, when I first put in to run for city council, one of the first things I thought is, man, I'm going to, people are going to bug me and tell me this and tell me that. So you put it out there, your cellphone, your email, and I had about 20 advertisements. And that's all I had, and I was a little disappointed. Well, it started to come, and I've had people stop by my office, I've had people email me, and even on the great Facebook, people have messaged me. And, and I think for me, I feel like I'm a very approachable person. I'll sit down at my desk if people want to come to work, come to my house. And one thing I've learned from, from our council and mayor now, I know each one of them, and I've been able to talk to each one of them, whether it be about city stuff or just life. You've got to be approachable, and you've got to listen. And I've had the opportunity to talk to each one of them, and I know who they are, and I would hope that I could continue that.
When I think of cities that are known for technology and their use of technology, Spanish Fork leads the way. And we need to absolutely continue to use our ability to adapt and educate and communicate. Transparency is huge. In fact, in our last planning commission that we had just a few weeks ago, I expressed this frustration, where why aren't we getting more people out to our meetings? What can we do better? Some of the suggestions I had is, why not on our public notice signs that are around town, put a QR code? So instead of somebody having to stop, get out of their car, walk over to the sign and read the fine print, they can stick their phone out, bring up the QR code, and go to a website that explains and describes what the project is. Why don't we have a website specific to each project going on in town that shows the advancement and the progress of those projects as they're happening, so that citizens that are curious and interested in a project can go to one site for information, rather than have to search for it? Those are a couple of ideas that I've suggested and that we're working towards, to try and make transparency and communication better to all residents in Spanish Fork.
I did want to ask a follow-up question with this, which you addressed a little bit, and you're so welcome to come up and give some more insight. My follow-up would be that there seems to be a common theme, that we want to find a way to get the information out there, make people aware where they can communicate, what time would they meet, but mainly finding a way to motivate and inspire them to come and express that. What do you think could be implemented to make that change? This is welcome to anybody that wants to answer.
I'll jump up here. It's hot, I realized I was the only one with a tie on, so that quickly went. So for me, it's about the engagement and knowing that your voice is being heard, much like Mike over here, I sent, my, my information's out there. If you need my information, I'll give you my personal cellphone number, and I encourage you to call me and we'll talk. Not a lot of calls came in until I started hearing, until we started engaging on Facebook, all right? Until somebody says, "He listened to me, you should call him." So I think part of getting this ball rolling with the technology is us engaging in it and letting it feed and build upon itself. Because my phone rings almost every day now, and it rings because, hey, so-and-so told me, you're here to listen, and I want to tell you about this. It's the same with social media, when you reach out, they see that you're engaging, it kind of builds upon itself. So to create that back and forth, we have to foster and nourish that growth. I think that's super important. It'll come if we go out. Today, we have a projectile function, we just shoot it out, and we don't necessarily listen. So we need to start listening. I think that's super important, and we'll get to where we want to go by listening and making sure that that, that conversation is happening.
So I spent four years on the, on the planning commission, like Jesse and Kevin have, and frustrated constantly on the lack of involvement from our community. And I think one of the things we don't do a very good job of is, is educating people on the importance of the conversation at the right time. I, I said at one point, we should just put a backhoe in a vacant field and start digging a hole, that will bring people to a meeting, you know, sort of create some controversy to have the conversation. But what we need to do is make sure people understand the importance of the conversation at the right time. When we're looking at a, at the general plan, making decisions about what's going to happen 10, 15 years from now, now is the time to have those conversations, not after the development is plotted. So I think it's incumbent upon us, and we can change the conversation if we can educate people about when the right, when the conversation needs to happen and not, and, and take away some of that empathy, or some of that, that just disregard for the conversation really
One of the things that I would like to see implemented, and you see it in bigger cities, and Spanish Fork has become bigger, is neighborhood meetings. Meetings where things that are happening, like what Shane just mentioned, when a development is coming, that these neighborhoods can get together and start talking about ideas. Is there things in this plan that, hey, this might change my lifestyle, this might change my quality of life, and I have some concerns about that? It gives an opportunity for the developers that want to be a part of the community to hear the citizens that they're going to be around, and then start making some changes. Maybe before it makes it to planning and zoning, we're able to have some conversations that are productive. We're able to make some changes to developments that make the life, the quality of life in Spanish Fork better. And that's an opportunity that we have as a city to, you know, start, start getting those going and, and start getting them available to those that maybe don't want to come and talk in city council, but with their peers or their neighbors, they would be willing to have those conversations.
So I hit on this a little bit in my opening answer. My involvement with most city functions has been my neighbors complaining or worrying about something and saying, "What's going on?", and then sending me on a journey to go figure it out and find it out for them. Again, I don't think we have a technology problem, I don't think, I don't think that getting the information out there is the problem. I think that it is making people feel like they are welcome to be a part of the discussion. Probably the loudest and most divisive discussion that I was a part of was in 2015, there was that life center that was proposed. And there were a few voices here and there in social media that were really loud. And, and then I continually saw them being silenced, or at least feeling like they were being silenced. I saw them go to city meetings and feel like they weren't allowed to speak, that they weren't being listened to. They would get a couple of minutes to talk, and then they would be talked over for the next hour. So I sent an open invitation to all these people. I, geez, I met a lot of people in the community, I would not know today how this, that not happened. We invited them to come to my home and discuss, "What is it that's got you all riled up?" And in that meeting, we found out that a lot of them just didn't have details, they were worried about things that weren't true about the project. But we also found out the things that, that really kind of the core issues of what people worry about that specific project. And so again, I don't think that we have a problem with the city being willing to put information out and be available. We need people and functions that will pull the people in in a way that they feel welcome to discuss it, they feel safe to discuss it. There were two or three people in that meeting that I thought would never speak to me again, because their big concern that they had been shouting in the community for two weeks really was not a concern, they just misunderstood something. Those people are very good friends of mine still today, we still discuss city issues and, and projects, because when the community comes together to, to make sure everyone has a voice and understands, we all win.
You know, about a week and a half ago, I got something on my phone that said, garbage pickup will be, will not be hindered this week, because they're going to pick it up on Monday, like they normally do, or on Tuesday, or whatever. My question, just sitting here talking, thinking, is, why can't we use that system a little more to the city's advantage a little bit, in as much as let people know about our meetings? If we were having a council meeting on a Tuesday, why don't we just flash them out and say, "Hey, we're going to have our council meeting." Or, "Hey, we're going to be discussing a new subdivision on south part of town, come on in and let, let's talk about it." I think sometimes we under-utilize some aspects of our technology, as well as over-utilize some aspects. So I don't know what the council wants to have all those people show up or not, but anyway, I think it would be an opportunity for you to be able to know that that, that council meeting is getting ready to start, and if you want to come down and visit, come, come on down and visit. down and visit.
Thank you for the response. The next question that has come in was, with the closing of the pool, do you believe that the city should have a rec center? If so, how do you propose to pay for it? We'll start down here.
You know, there's also another question that talks about the pool, I don't know if they want to tie that in or not, but the rec center, I think it's like anything else. We have to look at it, I know we put it up on ballot here, was it a year or two years ago, about, and it kind of got defeated, because they didn't want to increase taxes and such. I think we have to look the long term, to see that if we're building a rec center, we eventually needs to make sure that it's self-sustaining. And I think that's a real key issue. And I know that one of the big issues also is that on the pool this year, once it closes down, we're wondering. But I do know that the city council has really been considering a lot of these aspects, and I know they're interested in getting those aspects taken care of in city council. So I would say the important thing is that, two things. We need a way to make it self-sustaining once it is up and running, but we also have to be aware that we attract businesses into Spanish Fork. And those businesses come in and are there to help us, and we do not want to step on their toes if they're already up and running. We need to encourage our citizens to take advantage of those recreation areas that we do have. And I think we do a really good job as far as the city recreation areas go, but I don't think we should be stepping on the toes of regular businesses within the city as well. But if we can be self-sustaining, once those areas are open and running, that would be fine. I don't think, as a citizen, that we are constantly wanting our property taxes and our other taxes to be raised. So if we can't pay for it, then maybe we need to let it go.
Thank you.
So the question was, do we want a rec center?
The pool closed, should we have a rec center? And if so, how would you pay for it?
So I got 90 seconds to talk about a rec center. I'm not anti-rec center. If the citizens of this city decide that they want a rec center, then let them vote on it. I am anti-tax-for-toys. I am, I was one of the faces of the vote no. The tax increase for the last proposed project was 166% increase. It was the largest increase ever proposed, taxes, Spanish Fork. Everyone hates that number, but it was legit. I tried like eight different ways to say it, and that's the one. It wasn't pizzas, that didn't make any sense. So honestly, what's happened in this town since that happened, it was in 2015, Fit City is an amazing initiative. We have trails, we have parks, we have all kinds of opportunities to recreate. And so, the question about a pool, do we need a pool? Do we have a pool? A pool we have is great, it's sad that it's leaving. I'd actually like to have a bigger discussion about why we're letting it go, and why we didn't get anything out of that, you know, relinquishing that lease that we had. I think we had an 80-year lease left on that pool. But these are the kind of initiatives that frankly can tear a community apart. We need to come together and build something that makes sense, and sometimes that means you don't build something, but you build an initiative. That Fit City initiative has gotten my family out, and has gotten us more active. We have spent more times on the trails throughout the city in the last six years than we ever would have thought of before. And we've had grant money brought in for different initiatives, which I think is genius. I mean, it's a great way to pay for such a thing.
Thank you.
All right, so this is a great question, the pool, the rec center, what do we do? You know, we've got the Spanish Fork pool here that's being torn down soon. I remember in high school, I helped a friend during a summer job build the Spanish Fork pool, and I've loved enjoying it ever since. And I have three daughters, young daughters, and a couple of weeks ago, we decided to purchase a membership to the Provo rec center, because, I mean, it's so hot, and it's hard to, you know, where do you go swimming? And sometimes, you know, so, and you can do a lot there. So personally, I'm kind of a fan of a rec center eventually, but I also want to see the bigger picture of what we need and what we can afford, and what's realistic, fiscally, et cetera, you know, with Spanish Fork residents. And a rec center is a big commitment, and you have to go about it, you know, in a very wise manner. I think, and I don't know the answers, but I do, I want to, you know, talk with you to find out what the best answer is. And I think, you know, in all likelihood, going with a pool, a newer pool next, is probably the best idea, and then eventually we kind of consider a rec center. Now, I've heard talk about potentially doing a rec center, maybe with teaming up with Salem or Payson, or some other combination, or maybe we do our own thing eventually, we can find the money in different ways. But I think, you know, longer, bigger picture, sure, I think a rec center would be fantastic for our city, but maybe it's something we, you know, do with others, and we just go about it in a very smart fiscal way. And I know Provo did this years ago, you know, with their pool, originally, then they built a rec center next to it, and then they add value to each other. One thing I know for sure is, you know, we don't want to build a pool, a new pool, and then a rec center somewhere different, and then have them fight against each other, and not add value to each other, and take away business from each other. You want them to add value, so I think having them together is a good idea. So maybe where we put a pool, we get enough land, so eventually we can afford to do a rec center there as well.
This is a great question. I think there comes a time in, in all of our lives, where we need to look back and say, the people that came before us, the citizens of Spanish Fork that came before us, invested in our future. And I think this is an opportunity for us to do the same thing for our kids. A rec center is important, a pool is important. It is not good that our pool is going away, we need a replacement for it. How we pay for it is a very good conversation that we need to have, and I think we need to explore all the opportunities there are to fund something like that. But the fact remains, it is a good investment for our community, it's a good investment for my kids and the next generation. And I'm willing to step up and make that commitment to build that pool or build that rec center for the next generation, just like my parents did for the baseball fields down here, the soccer fields up north. That is an investment in our community, that's what makes Spanish Fork so great, is we have places like that to take our kids to enjoy throughout the year.
In 2014 is when we moved here to Spanish Fork, and when we moved to Spanish Fork, we had some kids. We had those kids, we started doing swim lessons at the Spanish Fork pool. So we've gotten to love that pool. As, you know, this is the last season of it being open, that question has been on most people that I talked to, that's on the front of their minds, are we gonna build another pool? What does that look like? In 2015, we had a life center that was put forward, that there was a lot of controversy, or not necessarily controversy, but a lot of differing opinions on whether or not we needed the life center. As we look at the opportunity of a pool, or a rec center, or whatever it may be, we have to learn from what happened in 2015 and say, okay, where did we miss? Who did we not talk to when we were trying to figure out what we needed as a city? How do we, we've talked about it a little bit today, how do we involve more people in those discussions? And then, as mentioned before, how do we pay for that pool? What does that look like? And we need to start having those discussions before we say, yes, we want the pool, yes, we want a rec center. No, we don't, because the, again, going back to the first question that was asked today is, who do we work for? We work for the citizens of Spanish Fork, both today and in the future, and it's important that we're setting up both for success. And sometimes that means we have to figure out how to get that before we jump the gun and get it. Or it might be like, yeah, let's go ahead and let's get it. But we need to have those conversations first, and then make the decision.
I think the one thing I've learned over the last three weeks is, do we want a pool? Now, I don't know if that means rec center pool. Yes, almost everybody I took to wants one. How we pay for that is a different story. And I am, I am very cheap, you can just ask my wife. I do not want to pay for one, I don't want any new taxes. So we would have to get creative, and what better city to do that in, in Spanish Fork? I want one, I don't want one at a cost that's gonna, that's gonna put a tax burden on those that are struggling already or can't afford it. I think we need one, we need to come up with a way to get one, and maybe we do small doses instead of a great big rec center. But I will say, 90% of the comments I get when I'm out talking to people, aside from the traffic issues, is they want a pool. And I think we need to come together, figure it out, find grants. This town is great with sponsorship and people donating money. It's a lot of money to raise, but I think it's something we could look at to do.
So as long as I've lived in Spanish Fork, we've had a swimming pool. And so it'll be a little different not having a community pool in town, it'll take a little getting used to. When it comes to a rec center, there's two questions we need to ask. Do the citizens want it? If they do, how do we pay for it? As a city council member, if I'm elected, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna look at the budget, and I'm gonna prioritize. That's the most important thing we're elected to do as council members, is vote on the budget and approve the budget. So I'm gonna look and see, okay, what are we paying for currently? If someone were to approach me and say, right now, when are we getting a rec center? I would look at them and say, right now, we're paying $90 million over the next few years for a new sewer. That's a high priority. We need to get that paid for, and then we can talk about other things. We're paying currently on a new library. So as of right now, our priorities are already set. As an elected official, my priority will always be public safety. That's gonna be the top of my list. And so I would look at public safety first, make sure that's covered, and then we need to start looking at ideas and talking about what are the next priorities, what are the next projects.
So there's two questions out there, that's the pool, it's high-density housing, I'm glad we're taking the pool one first. So for me, it's interesting, we go from a pool to, do you want a rec center? Well, there's a gap there, right? Do we want what we have, or do we want what Provo has? I think for me, we need to be crystal clear about what the community wants. Do we want a full-blown pool? Do we want a full-blown rec center? And then, what's the cost of doing that? That'll be hard to put together today, as the price of 2x4s changes by the minute. But I think we need to be crystal clear what we're asking for, and then look at where we need to fit it into the financial frames of this city. Provost's pool was very, very expensive. Do we need that? I'm not gonna say we do or we don't, I say we need to explore it. We need to look at the options, we need to look at what the citizens want. I do know one thing, I will tell you, it will be built, if I'm in there, on a piece of land that Spanish Fork City owns, and it will never be taken from us again. We're not gonna go back in time and see what happened, but whatever is built in this community will last. I think Shane said it the best. His parents built some pretty cool ball fields over here, in fact, that's where I love to be. That's what needs to be in this city, and we need to make sure we own and operate it the way that we want to operate it, and take that input. I think that's super important, and I think how we get there, does it need to be tomorrow? Absolutely not. Will it be? Probably not. But there's some money coming, I think the RAP tax is something we don't talk about enough in this town. I look at, you know, the big life center was shot down, but guess what? The RAP tax was definitely, it followed that, and it was approved. So we want to invest in our communities. That's gonna be almost a million dollars a year coming up in the next couple of years. It's gradually growing, I think that's directly, and swimming pools can be one of those things used, so.
Thank you. So this question's gonna be dealing with water. One of our questions is that water shortage is of concern. If high rates of development continue, what steps is the city going to take to be prepared to combat that basic need? What would you do?
Yes, we are in a drought, and water is a concern for everybody, and having this conversation with our city manager was very interesting a couple of weeks ago, because, you know, I asked, one of my first questions for him was, you know, what about water? What about the drought? What do we do? How are we? And, you know, it was one of the neatest moments of our meeting together, learning that Spanish Fork, for decades, has been planning and preparing water-wise. And we are, you know, I don't want to overstep my statement here, but we are in really good shape, we're doing well with our water. Now, that doesn't mean to say we shouldn't be careful and, you know, slow the flow, and definitely, I know that I'm doing that, and I'm sure most, if not all of you are as well, but I'm, we're lucky to live in a city where our leaders have thought about this so long ago, and now here we are in a big drought, where, you know, a lot of people are worried, and a lot of surrounding cities are in trouble. And so, you know, we're in good shape, but how can we stay in good shape and move forward accordingly? Well, I think, you know, like I said, slow-the-flow campaigns, education, being informed, I think those are key things. And as a city council member, you know, I would love to work with the council to promote these things, to push these efforts out, these campaigns, to help inform, you know, our residents, so we can always be good with water.
So many, many, many years ago, the folks that came for us made a very wise decision and invested into water. Enough water that would allow us to grow to our full build-out in Spanish Fork City. That's an amazing foresight that they had, so we're set. But that does not mean that we can just waste water. We still need to conserve water, we still need to take those steps to be conservative throughout our dealings with how we use the water. So I think, I think there's a couple of things, we're good, we're set, but it can't last forever. We, if we're in drought for the next 10 years, whether we have the right to have the water or it actually exists are two different things. So we need to make sure we put in place today practices that are sustainable, landscaping that's sustainable, and we can set, we can make sure that our city policies and our city codes put forth those type of landscape opportunities, so that we can make sure that we are saving as much water as we can. There is an opportunity to save water at every turn we can, the city's doing their best to make that happen. Our city engineer has implemented a irrigation system for all of our homes that saves a tremendous amount of water. So we're doing it all the time, we just continue that, and we'll be just fine.
Like has been mentioned before, our city has done a good job of preparing for what we're currently experiencing. We have lots of water available, we have lots of things available. One thing that some may not know is that every time a development comes into the city, they are required to bring or to purchase enough water for that development that they're bringing in. So it's important that we're staying ahead of the curve, we're not just staying on what we currently have, but we're continuing forward. Along with that, many years ago, the city invested in pressurized irrigation that was measured, so that they could charge people for what the water, the water that they were using on their lawns and different things, and to help them to incentivize to use less water. And it set us up for today, where we are in this drought. But as we continue forward, grant plans like the RACIO system that has been implemented by the city to help citizens slow the flow, to use less water on their lawns, what's needed, and to continue forward. But it's important that we have a city council who is going to be looking forward again the next 10 years, the next 15 years, what water rights should we be purchasing? What water initiatives should we be doing? This year in the budget, there's a change gonna be happening at the golf course, where they're going to be making some changes that have a cost today, but are going to cut down on the water usage in the future. Again, our city is thinking about it today for the future, but we, as whoever is elected, I am going to look for the future, and I make sure that we are water-wise going forward.
I could just walk up and say ditto, because they've had some great comments. But I will, I remember back when Spanish Fork got the pressurized irrigation, there was a, there was a lot of people that weren't fans of it. And I remember my wife worked at the city office for a little while, and the phone calls she would get from people complaining about their bill for pressurized irrigation. It was pretty crazy, how many people. But you look at the site they had to look forward and see where we're at today, great planning, Spanish Fork is probably set better for water than most cities. However, I do think education, teaching people to, you know, slow your flow, we're all tired of hearing that, but it definitely rings with us, and we understand that. And I think just continued, as we, as we look at the growth, make sure we manage our growth, make sure that we have water for everything we need to do.
Mike's right in that when pressurized irrigation was being proposed, there were a lot of people that were not happy about it, because it came with a tax increase. But looking back now, Spanish Fork leads the way when it comes to water. Other communities are absolutely envious of what we have with our pressurized irrigation, and we're fortunate to live what we, live where we do. The real issue when it comes to water is when you look, look on a state level and on a city level, in Spanish Fork, we're doing great, but when you read the news that reservoirs are being emptied and drained, that's not because somebody turns on their tap water. We need to start looking at, how do we find ways to conserve agriculture water? What can we do with the water that's being used agriculturally? Obviously, it can't go away, we need our farmers, we need our irrigation, but what are some ideas that we can use and put in place that can serve water at an agricultural level?
A lot of great points have been made on this, I will add a couple. The first one is, if you're concerned about the water in this city, get onto YouTube and watch the June 1 city council and watch the June 1 city council meeting minutes. They did a great job detailing exactly where we are with our water in this city, so that information is out there, I encourage you to go look for it. You know, my brother just built a new house. Where's Doug? Is he around here? He's looking at doing a zero-scape yard in his house with AstroTurf and the whole nine, and not using a drop of water. And I, you know, I went home that day, and I thought, "I don't know what this guy's thinking. He's got, he's got five kids, he's, you know, he needs this place to play." And I think, what we need to do, yes, the city's doing a lot, and we have some water, but we also need some good examples. We need some people in the community to go out and say, "What does a, what does a zero-water yard look like? What could that be? Could it meet the needs of my family?" You know, we need to get the, those sprinkler, those sprinkler timers in. We put one in our house a couple of years ago, and I'll tell you, I was a little nervous. I don't like people telling me how much water I can use, I wanna be able to do what I can. And I'll tell you what, that thing's been a game changer for us, and our yard's green. And we're using less water, and you can get on there, and you can see your water usage and how you're using it, and it really puts you in the driver's seat. So, so those things, and developing ways to measure and use water are fantastic. But I also think we need to go after some good solutions on, on what can this look like, so the citizens can go get inspired. I think we need to inspire each other through different ways. So, thank you.
I know that there's, this is kind of a pet subject of mine. I, I love flowers, and if anybody's been by my house, they've seen my flowers, and a lot of people, I've had people actually stop and say, "How can you afford to water all those?" And I think sometimes they don't realize that we do a lot of contact watering. We water early in the day, or late at night, and we don't turn on sprinklers to water 150 feet, square feet, when we only need 15 or 20 square feet. And, we've thoroughly enjoyed it. My wife, when she was alive, was a florist, and she loved flowers. And I guess I've just, kind of rubbed off on me, to the point that it's one aspect of my life that we really love, and I'm fortunate that I live in Spanish Fork, where they haven't come out and demanded that we cut back on our watering. Plus, we have to remember that if we don't tell people they can't water, then maybe they're not gonna water Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday. Maybe they're gonna only get to water two or three days a week. So I think sometimes we overdo it with caution, scare people, and cause a panic. So, but I think it's an issue we need to be aware of our, of our resources, and watch out for our electrical, sewer, and water, all of them.
Thank you.
Wow, last one on this one. This is a perfect example of something that we have inherited. I mean, talk about something to be proud of and to progress with, like, the whole state is worried about water right now, and we're, we're up here saying, you know, "We got a question about drought," and we're kinda like, "Yeah, there's a drought, but we're set." That's actually really amazing. I was glad this question was on here, because it got me to look into it. And this is the kind of question and/or concern that I hear in the community that gets me thinking, and then I dig into it. And it was mentioned that we need to worry about agriculture. In the state of Utah, 75% of our water goes to crops, and that's a big number, but we all like to eat, so I think we should figure out a way to help them keep growing food for us. 23% of our water goes to golf courses. And I've loved seeing that the city of Spanish Fork is taking steps to mitigate our water usage there. I mean, that's a huge number. 2% to 3% of our water is what makes it to our homes. Worrying about, worrying about new homes going up next to you, 10 homes, 15 homes, and are we gonna have water, really isn't part of the equation. It's not really where our concern needs to be. We need to be stepping back and looking at the issue as a whole, as a, as a community and as a state. But man, we, we've inherited greatness here, and I think this is a perfect example of, we have predecessors that have made good decisions, and they've made them with good principles. They have said, "We are going to do the right thing, we're gonna do good things, and we're gonna keep doing them." One of the reasons that, that I think those decisions were made was for this place to be a place that their kids wanna live, and a place that their kids can live. And this water issue is, is one that really isn't an issue for our kids. This is a place where they can come and, and continue to live.
Thank you.
Honestly, thanks, thanks to the previous council and the previous managements for this.
How do you plan to address the needs of housing shortage in the state, but also plan for a proper infrastructure? And, does that mean increased high-density housing? So again, that's, how do we plan for housing shortage? And concerned citizens, how do we address the concerns over high-density housing?
The best one to be first on. I really like this question, because it comes up every time you run, and it should come up every time you run, because if you don't have a plan to figure this out, then you shouldn't be on the city council. The, the question really turns to this black-and-white thing, density or no density, and it really isn't a black-and-white. It's about creating a, a community that has a full range of choices for your, for the people to live in it. From, from single-family residents to townhomes, to condos, or whatever that might be, so that we have this broad range for people to live in, to have a, a very diverse community to live in. I wanna make sure, plain and simple, that my kids can grow up and live in this community. Had, had, the city council before me had the idea that we're gonna stop growing, I couldn't have come to this community, and I'm glad that I'm here. So I wanna make sure that I have the, the, the plan in place that allows my kids that are out in the audience to live here when they choose to. And that means a full range of housing opportunities. With some of those choices, it, it really can impact the type of investments you need to make, in terms of infrastructure. The, the more single-family homes you have, the more roads you need, the more access you need. And so, a good mix, a good balance between single-family and, and mid-density residential is really important, to make sure our tax burden stays low, and we have the right infrastructure that we can maintain, and, and we have the housing that our, our kids need to live here.
Oftentimes, the word "density" creates a lot of motion, and there's not a clear definition of what high-density is, or what low-density is, and there's some, you know, somewhere in between, there's a, there's a medium-density. But like Shane said, there has to be answers to the housing crisis that we are currently facing in our, in our community in Utah. If you haven't looked at the way that houses are going, you can't find houses, they're off the market so quickly, because there's not a lot of them. But along with that, when we look at land usage and, and master plans in the city, we have to look for the right areas, for the right piece of property, for the right housing. Does it make sense to put density in the middle of the city? Does it make sense to put high-density that's going to affect the quality of life of another community? We need to make sure that we have good discussions when we talk about our planning, our master plans. Do they fit what the city wants in those areas, or that they see fitting in those areas? And if not, what do we need to do to change them? When you go to a city council meeting, or a planning and zoning meeting, you will know when there is a townhome development on the, on the agenda that day, because there will be more people there than on any other day of the, of the week. And so, is density something that we shouldn't ever embrace? No, it is something that should be put in the right places in, in the city. And also, we should have estate lots and, and other types of housing, because we need to have that array.
I was talking to my wife about this question, and I believe there is no right answer, 'cause everybody will think they're right unless something's happening in their neighborhood. Then they may change their views. So I think this is one, if I'm voted to the city council, I'm working for the citizens, and it may, you may get lit up, but I would wanna hear the discussion. I wanna hear what they're saying. Also, let's, let's resort back to Spanish Fork City knows what they're doing, and their master plan. You know, let's, if we need to take a look at that and adjust it. But I truly believe, I want my kids to grow up here in Spanish Fork, and right now, that would be a horrible time for them to try and buy a home in this city. However, how much is too much? I, I don't believe there's a right answer. I don't have the answer. I would, I would take input from every citizen, and, and then look at our master plan and see how we can make it work.
I grew up in a home with six siblings, and on the other side of the fence was a giant cornfield. And I left town for a couple of years, and when I came back, the cornfield was gone, and it was full of houses. And it ticked me off. I felt like Spanish Fork was losing its small-town feel. Here we are 20-plus years later, and I realized that myself and my six siblings all live in homes that were once located on cornfields. So growth is gonna continue in Spanish Fork. We want growth. We want our kids to be able to stay close. Growth helps all of us. If we don't have the growth in our community that we've had over the last few years, we don't have a Costco, we don't have a hospital. And so growth can be beneficial. What's most important is that we plan for that growth. It's been 10 years since the city's adjusted and looked at our master plan, and I think it's time, I know it's time, that we reevaluate. You think of the changes that have happened in the last 10 years. It's time for the city council, for the planning commission, for the citizens especially, to all get involved, look at the general plan, and decide, where do we want growth? Where do we want the high-density? Where do we want the low-density? Because we need both. We absolutely need both.
So, for me, it, it goes down to the general plan. I think, when I'm out in the neighborhoods, in some neighborhoods, you get beat up a little bit more than other neighborhoods, when you're knocking doors. What it comes down to for me, and what I'm hearing, is transparency. We need to update the plan. The planning commission and the city council, they have to be on the same page, they better be lockstep on this issue, and it better be transparent, so that we're, we know, anybody out there knows exactly what they're, what they're zoned for and what's zoned around them. That is absolute must. And then I think we need to hold the developers to it. If we do that, and we're all on the same page, and we've done the plan together, and it's set, if I'm a developer and I come into this city, I know exactly where I can build. And I think where I'm feeling the frustration that we're currently feeling with this question is, it's not about low-density and high-density. When I first heard this question, I said, "You know what? I'll just go up there and say I'm against high-density. It's gonna make everybody happy, it sounds like." But that's not what we're asking here. We're asking about the way that it's being done, the transparency of it, and, and what neighborhood this is going into. So for me, it's about doing it in a transparent way, making sure we all have input on that plan, and that there's no question about it, there's no 11th-hour deals. I think that that's super important, 'cause everybody, a lot of us started out in townhouses in this town. I think that's important. We, we need the broad array, but it needs to be done in a transparent way, where everybody can give input, and there's no question about it. That, to me, is what I'm gonna fight for, and make sure that we're all on the same page with that, the planning commission and the city council. We also talk about conflict of interest, I know that's one, but that will eliminate it.
The last couple of meetings I've gone to, I've been very impressed. They've agreed to have certain subdivisions built in the city, and you know, each of them have some real benefits. But one thing they both have, they both have single-family dwellings, and they both have condos and townhouses. And so, they've kind of mixed and grouped, and, and tried to make it helpful for each and every one of us. Now, of course, we all have grandkids, and we all, our grandkids are, or are going to have grandkids one of these days, and our kids, and we want them to move back in. Maybe they can't afford that $400,000 or $500,000 single-family dwelling. Maybe they need a condo or a townhouse, but they still wanna be close by us. I think sometimes we need to be taking into consideration what our families need and what the people need. And with the, the price of materials nowadays, it's getting really, really hard, and so I think sometimes we need, just need to consider that a mix is good, and that's where I have it. Thank you.
So I got my start in small-town involvement in American Fork. My family owned some land in American Fork, and the mayor decided he wanted some of it. He was trying to take some of it. They also wanted to build high-density housing just on the other side of it. So we had 10 acres, they wanted to build high-density housing on the other side of it. I was 16, I didn't understand what that meant or why it, why it mattered, but man, my neighbors were mad. And, and it tore our community apart for a little while. It was, it was a, it was frustrating, because it was a change. You know, the city plan has been mentioned, you can go pull it up, but, but when you're living in a neighborhood, and you've built your, your new house, and you're in your dream home, and then all of a sudden, you see a sign go up, that there's a skyrise going up across the street, you're going to be upset. You're going to, you're gonna say, "Wait, where is this?" And someone's gonna say, "Well, there's a master plan, it's available somewhere, it's been there 10 years, why didn't you see it before you built your home?" I think that was hit on. People don't like surprises. People, people don't wanna be, be felt like they're being taken advantage of or tricked. And part of the problem with our master plan now is that we do have swaths of land that are marked agriculture or multi-use, because no one has tried to change them. So that process of, of how to rezone an area to build high-density housing, really is, is where community input is needed. Does it make sense? You know, we are all here, living as part of a community, and it is our job to make this a community a place where we enjoy living, and the people that move in here enjoy as well. We have kids that we wanna live here. A year ago, the city, might've been a little longer, the city allowed accessory dwellings to start being used legally. They'd been being used for years, but the city allowed it. I still don't understand why they need $65 for you to use your property the way you want, but they allowed it with the proper rules. They said you can't have cars illegally parked on the street, you've gotta have egress, you gotta have room. And I think that programs like that in Spanish Fork would work as well for, for the housing use that we have.
Thank you.
Stop making criminals out of people that are just trying to make sense of a situation, and let's support them.
Thanks.
One of the driving factors for me to run for city council was seeing all the growth around us, which I'm sure we've all felt the last couple of years, especially the last year or two. We just kind of feel almost suffocated at times with all the growth coming into this little city that we love so much. And so, yeah, that definitely played into me deciding to run, because I want to be, have that voice in city council, and listen to you, and to share with them, and our city leaders, you know, are we making the best decision? What decisions? What can we do to, you know, to, to move forward well, as we're doing, and even better, and plan further in advance, and so forth? So when it comes to high-density housing, you know, I think we need housing, all housing options, high-density as well, because as we know, right now in Utah, there's a housing shortage. A lot of people want homes, we don't have a lot. It's a supply and demand issue. But we want good housing options for our, our citizens, for our children, and those coming in from out of state. And so, you know, again, entertaining all different options of housing, I think, is the key. And, and my last thought is, I believe we need more input from you, the citizens, on how you view our growth. What kind of housing you think works? What kind of game plan you would like to see, you know, rolled out? And I would like to do that as a city council member, with focus groups, with surveys. And I really believe that if we do those things, we'll learn a lot about, from you, about the best way to move forward with all this growth that's inevitable. Thank you.
Great. So our next question would be, what does conflict of interest mean? And what steps will you take to prevent that?
So, I guess I'm the first I get to define conflict of interest, and everyone else gets to just say, "Yes." Well, so conflict of interest is any time that you have, you can get personal gain in something that is being decided. We live in a, you know, it's a getting, becoming a bigger city, but there's a lot of times where you have had interaction with somebody that is trying to propose something, or those different things. It's important that we, as city council members, understand the state code and, and the laws behind conflict of interest. That when something comes up that we may have interaction with, or it may be for personal gain, that we're, we're declaring that, and sometimes abstaining ourselves from those votes. And so, I think that, you know, to further answer that question, it's, if I'm in, when I'm in the city council, I'm, if there's something that comes available that there is a conflict of interest, I can refuse myself from that vote, or, or declare it, and then go from there.
I'm gonna agree with this definition. Worked great. I was, I taught a lesson a long time ago. I work at a credit union just Pacific Horizon on Third South up there. When we, when we bought that building, we needed to change just a little bit in order to make it work for us. And, and I remember we were going to the planning commission, we were gonna go to the city council, just to make sure with what we were doing was okay. And, and Sherman Huff, longtime great man in this community, was on the city council, and, and he told me, "Hey, I'm gonna pull myself away and not vote on this." And my first thought was, "Hey, everybody will listen to you, stay there and do it." And, and he explained to me that, hey, this is, he's personally involved with the credit
union on the board of directors. Doesn't gain anything necessarily because it's not a paid position, but he just told me he felt like it wasn't right for him to put himself in that situation. And that's a lesson that was taught to me and I think that's a great idea. Anything that you would stand to have personal gain or benefit, you just pull yourself away from that so there's no questions asked.
Public officials should never use their office for personal gain. It's as easy as that. Anytime you have a conflict, it needs to be transparent. It needs to be open. You need to state it and make sure the public, the citizens, are aware of that. It's very important that with trust, that's one of the main things that you can earn from citizens is their trust. And if you do something that damages that trust, you're going to have a very difficult time getting it back. And so it's very important that you disclose that if there is something that comes before the city and you're voting on it, that you recuse yourself if there's any type of conflict.
I agree with everything that's been said. No. One of the things I think that when we define something, we draw a box around it. So if we draw a box around it, we can say, "Yeah, but I don't meet that criteria. I didn't meet that definition." And all these definitions are great and I agree with every single one of them. But for me, it boils down to character. You know why you're making that decision. Am I making that decision because I need to for some business interest? Or am I doing it for the best benefit of the city? That's a personal thing. It's a character thing for me, something that I take personal. Because we can draw boxes around it all day long, but all that does is open the door for loopholes. It's character that matters. You know why you're making that decision. And if something comes up that's even in question, absolutely 100%, do not vote on that. I don't... To me, this isn't the easiest question because it is a yes or a no. There's no gray area here. If you have a conflict, do not vote on it. That's what I believe. Be transparent about it. I love transparency. It just clears the water. But yeah, it's the character of the people that you have up here that are being elected. That's what's the most important out of definition.
I think it's been handled pretty good. I guess if your desires outweigh those of the citizen, you're on the wrong page. So I would say that conflict of interest, if any of your desires outweigh those of the citizens who's paying your bills, then you're wrong.
You know, when I told my family that I wanted to run for city council, they said, "Why?" They want to know what I was going to gain from that. And I thought that was an interesting question. When I met with Seth Perrins, he said, "Hey, even if you don't get on the council, give me your list of things you want to happen. Like, what is it you want? Why are you doing this? What's your agenda?" Because we'll work on it. Like, we'll integrate you. I think he mentioned that Leslie Nope ran because she wanted a stop sign put in her neighborhood. So the interesting thing is, I don't have any... Well, I do have something to gain. I can sleep at night. You know, issues come up, community questions come up, and I literally can't sleep until I figure them out. So that's what I would get out of this. A conflict of interest, I guess, would be if someone was going to pay me to sleep and so I needed to do that. But simply put, you don't run for office to make yourself any money of any sort or any gain. You know, I don't have family land. I don't have some grand agenda. I really just want people to be involved and I want them to understand what it is that they can be involved in. And I think stick to that, you avoid that conflicts of interest.
There is no room for conflict of interest in public service. You know, as a council member, whenever that, if that were to arise, you know, you have to, you know, excuse yourself. And, you know, ethics are a big deal in government and, you know, in city, you know, government like this. And so I would hope that we would all have enough, you know, emotional intelligence to do just that, if that were ever the case. Since I have a short answer, because there have been so many great answers, I wanted to address a question in case we don't get it. And that is, what if we had a $1 million grant to use the money in our city? Where would we spend it? I just wanted to say that I would spend that money paying our firefighters more, our police officers more, our city employees more. Maybe not all of it, but a good chunk of it because they work so hard for us and keep our city running so well. And that's where my money would go.
I'm going to agree with the definition, so I don't want to get into the definition necessarily. But I think we are all, everyone that's running, everyone on the council has a day job. And so there will be times when we do have a conflict of interest. I don't think there's a way to avoid it, but what we need to do is make sure we disclose it and we're very open about it and let people know that it does exist and then recuse ourselves from the vote. It's just that simple. I think there's two types. You're going to have one that it's actually a conflict where my decision could, I could enrich myself, and then another one where it's a perceived conflict of interest for me. Someone thinks that I have one. Same thing. Disclose. Make sure everyone understands why, what, and what the issues are, and then recuse yourself if you need to. But we can't avoid it. We just need to tackle it head-on.
I've got an added question as moderator. As city council, you would swear an oath to the Constitution. And the state constitution actually requires that you subscribe that oath. One of the most important amendments in the US Constitution is the Ninth Amendment. It states, "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others restained by the people." How are you going to ensure that you, in your role, will uphold the rights of the people, that no interpretation of law infringes on that?
I think government overreach is something that is real and could happen. You'd like to think that it wouldn't happen in our small hometown, but I think it can. And the main reason I'm running is because I love this city, the people in it, and I'd like to think that I would just be their voice. And I think that I would want to make sure that I didn't overstep or speak for them. And I would be mindful of what they want and listen to their concerns.
So why was the Constitution created? It was created because they had lost trust in their prior government. The Constitution wasn't created for the government. It was created for the people. And as a representative, that's who I will represent, is the citizens of Spanish Fork. And anytime you have an opportunity to interact with someone who represents you, it's a good thing. I think that's part of the frustration with the national level is, when do we ever see those people? When do we ever have a chance to talk and interact with those people? So I can make a promise that if elected, I will be available. I will have my phone available, my email available. Come by my house. Sit down. Let's talk. I love to talk about anything and everything Spanish Fork. And so I will be available. Thank you.
So for me, the Constitution boils down to this very simply, and this is the one that talks about it the most. The Constitution is a promise of a free people to govern themselves. That's what it all boils down to. For me, it's knowing who should make that decision. Is it an individual decision? Is it a city decision? Is it a family decision? Is it a state decision? Is it a national decision? That's where this gets confused. The decisions that you need to make, I want you to make. In fact, you should be making more decisions than you're making in your life for yourself, in my personal opinion. But it's really to say, who should answer this question? And it's not always up the chain. Spanish Fork does not need the state of Utah answering the problems that are happening in this city no more than I need to answer for the problems that are happening in your household. And the federal government does not need to be answering for problems that we're having in the state of Utah. So for me, it's a free people to govern themselves. That's what this is all about. And we need to be defining that more and taking the responsibility to make the decisions that we need to make and not let others make it for us.
Actually, it's pretty simple. We, as far as the people are concerned, the government's not there to dictate to us. We are here as a city council to represent the people. And the people are the ones that should be dictating to us as far as what they would like to see as far as their government is concerned. We are a, what do they say? We are the people for the people. And that's the way it needs to be, whether it's state, federal, or city. That's it. And you need to be open. If you're a city councilman, you need to be aware. Yeah, you've got some buddies there on that city council and you've got some friends in the office, but really, the person that you need to keep happy is that citizen that's out there that really needs your help. And there are a lot of issues, not just financial issues, but we have a lot of issues in our town. But most of them can be solved. And the Constitution is there for those people. Thank you.
So if you lived anywhere in this country in the last year, you have seen what ignoring the Ninth Amendment can cause. We have definitely experienced and seen overreach. And at the city level, it really, we wouldn't look to the city to fix that, but the city has, the city councillors have access to state representatives. State representatives speak to federal representatives. And really, it is our job at this point, once elected, to help the citizens know what their rights are if they're being trampled on, because they will be trampled on if you allow it. You know, we did many things in the last year to, you know, come together and to help and to help slow the spread. You know, we were asked to make decisions. And we were insulated from a lot of the crazy being here in Utah. We had a governor that said we're not going to mandate some things. But I was shocked when we had no local elected officials complain when the governor told us that we couldn't have people in our own homes. I was shocked when he told us our kids couldn't go on dates. I had neighbors get angry at me because I mentioned, "Hey, this is overreach. If they want to ask me to be a respectful citizen, if they want to ask me to avoid other people, that makes sense." But to tell me that I cannot use my property the way I want and let my kids associate with who they want, I can't believe we got there that fast and that we were okay with it. And a lot of our neighbors weren't okay with it, but they didn't want to stir the pot and they didn't want to discuss. And that is a time and a place where our representatives should have been speaking for us up the chain and should have been speaking back to us and letting us know, "No, you have rights. The federal government can't tell you what to do." And at the state level, a lot of those items were not legal. In fact, two weeks, a week later, the governor actually rescinded that order and said, "I'm sorry. We overstepped." So I would have liked to have seen our local representatives be more vocal about that.
Thank you.
The Ninth and Tenth Amendments, they talk about, in short, protecting our rights and our powers. They're very important. And what's also important is the role of a city council member. And if elected, you know, I would be your voice. I would listen to you. I would be, provide leadership, direction, guidance, and vision. And these are things that I can promise I would do if given the opportunity to serve in this capacity.
I think this question goes back to the first question that was asked today. Who do we work for? At the end of the day, we work for the citizens of Spanish Fork. And we need to make sure that those rights are protected. Even if they're not spelled out specifically in the Constitution, the Ninth Amendment still protects those rights. But I think there's also this concept of, you can't infringe upon my right because you believe you have the right to do so. So I think we do need to hold some people accountable to their actions and their decisions. But it is my job to work for the citizens of Spanish Fork City and protect your rights.
While the answers may be simple, this is the issue that we could probably talk about all day because the Constitution is what makes this place that we live great. Many men and women have died fighting for that right or the rights that the Constitution grants us. And as Shane just mentioned, we, as we are elected, we are to represent the people and to make sure that those rights are not infringed upon. And it's important that we do that, that we don't just sit back and let those happen. In our state, we have a legislative session at the first of the year. It's important that our city is there, that they're representing the citizens of Spanish Fork, making sure that our voices are heard, making sure that if you have a concern, that we're, that our state representatives are hearing that, that they're seeing that. We have many leaders in our city that have been doing that. And as a council member in Spanish Fork, I promise you that I will be there, that I will make sure that your voice is heard when those decisions are being made.
Thank you. We'll conclude this with 90 seconds of closing remarks. So if you just want to go around and offer some closing remarks, try to keep it to 90 seconds.
First of all, thank you, everybody, for braving the heat and being here tonight. We appreciate it. I grew up in Spanish Fork and I grew up in a home where projects and issues of the city were caught, talked about constantly. So Spanish Fork, to me, is not just where I live. It really is who I am. I love being resident of Spanish Fork and I really do love serving. It's been a pleasure to have the opportunity to serve on the planning commission for the past four years and to be involved and to be a part of our community. I love Fiesta Days. I love the tradition. We live in a great community. And I, as a council member, would love your vote and would love the opportunity to continue working towards making sure Spanish Fork is not only a great place for us, but for the future generations to come. Thank you.
So thanks for coming out tonight. It's cooled off, so it's quite pleasurable now up here. You know, when people vote for me, I want them to vote for me because service. I believe in service. My mom taught me that. She's here in the audience tonight. Service is a huge cornerstone of who I am in this town. Honest in character, absolutely. You know, fire truck just went screaming up here. We have so many volunteers in our city that make this city run. And I like that tradition. I like being here in Spanish Fork. It's what makes us great. Tonight, we were only able to kind of scratch the surface. We just scratched the surface a little bit of the issues facing our city. So I encourage you to get engaged. What I heard from everybody up here tonight is the phone lines are open, Facebook, whoever you want to communicate, whether it's with me or any of these great candidates. Let's take these discussions deeper. I want to get to know you and get to know these issues deeper. So for me, you have an open door to have your voice heard. That's fantastic. So get out there, get involved, and let's keep Spanish Fork. Somebody said it. Who was it? Spanish Fork is the greatest small town in America. I'm proud to live here. When I travel with my job, I always tell people I live in the greatest small town in America. They laugh. When they come here, they know. They always leave. So we do live in the greatest small town in America. It needs to stay that way. It needs to stay the safest city. We are the safest city. It needs to stay that way. Thank you. Have a good night.
I'm going to read something so that I don't miss anything. And it'll be quicker so he doesn't buzz at me here. So I live on Eighth North and Fourth East. And I grew up in this area and I love the neighborhood and the people. I came back home in 2012, take care of my mother, until she passed away in August of that year. I bought the home for my family and my wife, and I started our life back here in Spanish Fork. My wife passed away in October of 18. That's when I started to dig back to work with Bill Summers and Macy's. I found I needed things to keep busy. But I shop out, I built a shop out back and started building things, landscaping and doing plumbing, electrical, and woodworking. And I've about got all those things done. Now what am I going to do? So guess what? I decided to run for city council. I've been in management for 45 years. I've built, I've worked for other companies. I've built stores. And I've also had my own companies. And I've loved every minute of it. And I love the people of Spanish Fork and I wouldn't, and I'm sad every time I see one of them pass away. So I know I'm the oldest in the group, but I still have a lot of energy. And my mind is still keen. You don't need to worry about me forgetting a lot of stuff.
Thank you.
So that's where I am. Just remember the name, John Terrell. And I'm the last one on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming out and listening to us answer these questions. If you haven't had enough of my musings and ramblings, I have a website, bretbills.com. You can read some of my thoughts and feelings on where things are headed in Spanish Fork. I've told people that I didn't have the good sense to be born here, but I was sure smart enough to move here and stay here. We're coming up on 20 years. I moved my wife away once. We lasted a year. She said, "We are going back." And I said, "You are right." So I guess my elevator pitch, if there's one thing that we've learned over the last year, it's that having access to a lot of information... year, it's that, that having access to a lot of information doesn't mean that we know what's going on. And I spend a lot of time helping friends, family, and frankly, learning myself because of this hobby. What is going on and what does it mean? What are the motivations behind the people that are doing it? And, and what's the outcome? And anyway, that's, that's really, that's really what I bring is open discussion. Please come and be welcome. I, I find it interesting how people come to ask me about, about these issues and, and they're very, very simple to talk about, they're simple to discuss. And I really appreciate the friendships that have come out of that. I love Spanish Fork. I've said I love Spanish Fork a lot. I think someone said that you can't run if that's all you're going to say, but hopefully, I've, hopefully I've said more. I have, I have five kids and I hope that they stay here. I hope that they live here. I hope they raise their families here. Thank you.
I love Spanish Fork very much and I have a burning desire to serve and to make a difference. And I, my family also is invested in this community. We're not going anywhere. We're here to stay. This is our hometown, our forever hometown. Spanish Fork is known for its great people. And I view that as our secret sauce. And that secret sauce will keep our community going strong. I know how to collaborate and I will be here to listen, to learn and to be your advocate. And I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you so much again for being here tonight, everybody.
Well, thanks, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I really do appreciate this, this forum and be able to be up here with these gentlemen and answer these questions. My name again is Shane Marshall. I think that our communities are at a crossroads. We have been very blessed with a very wide open city for a very long time. And as our, as our growth continues, we need to be laser focused on how we move from here forward. We don't have a lot of opportunities to get it wrong any longer. We need to get it right. Every day, we need to move forward. And I think with my background, being a civil engineer, working with, working for the Department of Transportation for 25 years, being on the planning commission, I can bring the background that can help us make good decisions and make it so that our quality of life is maintained for now and into the future, so that our kids can be here and their kids can stay here. I appreciate again this opportunity and thank you, thank you again.
Seven years ago, my wife and I decided where we wanted to raise our family and we chose deliberately here in Spanish Fork because of many of the things that have been spoken of tonight. We love this community and we wanted to be a part of it. While, when we showed up here, we decided we wanted to be more than just a citizen here, we wanted to serve. And so since day one, that's what I've been doing. Going to city council meetings, going to planning commission meetings, even though nobody else was there. Serving in the Chamber of Commerce, currently being on the planning commission, being the chair of the chamber commission. I know a lot of the things that are going on in the, in the city, the concerns, the worries, the things that our businesses are facing, the things that our citizens are facing. And I want to be that voice and I want to help them to be heard. And we need to continue to look to the future. Spanish Fork isn't the city it is on accident. It's because of great leadership and we need leaders who are again, looking to the future. My name is Jesse Carden. My website is real easy, it's jessecarden.com. I would love to talk to everybody. I'd love my phone to blow up this evening or tomorrow or whenever to talk about the issues that are facing you and your family. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Dare to Dream and Liberty for, for putting this on and for Jake being the moderator. I think this has been really good. I did not want to do this at all. I am good one-on-one, big groups, TVs, I'm out. But I, people have asked me, why, why are you doing this? Why are you doing this? And I, I caught the bug. I don't know if you've seen the bug, get the bug, but the Spanish Fork bug. And I want you to notice something over the next few weeks for Fiesta Days. I've had the chance now for about seven years to be involved and help with Fiesta Days. And as you're, as you're at events, look around for a red t-shirt. Everybody will have the same logo on it. And, and just how many volunteers this city has, just for their Fiesta Days, it is mind blowing. I had the opportunity this year to help with the pyromusical and, and we had a rough situation. The guys that had donated their time and energy and money for so many years, just got to the point where they couldn't do it. And, and I thought we were going to lose it. But it's one of my favorite events. Obviously, I've been doing it for seven years, so it better be. But we needed to raise about double the amount of money that we had the years passed. And Spanish Fork found out about that and the businesses and people, and we were able to raise over $30,000 just to keep that going. It, it, it's just amazing what this city is and does and continues to amaze me. Like I said, Fiesta Days, look for those red shirts and just see how, how involved people are. Great community. And if I haven't mentioned, I love this town.
Thank you, each of you. Let's give it a round of applause for these gentlemen. We're going to have the opportunity to hear from mayoral candidates and we'll go ahead[1797.11]